City Council present with the exception of Alder Person Rayom, who indicated that he would be absent at tonight's meeting. Item three on our agenda, actually we're gonna have a reordering of events based on the agenda that you might have in front of you, in which I'll invite you all to please rise as members of the Wisconsin Rapids Police Department Honor Guard present the colors.
Right shoulder, arms. Ready, cut.
Please join us in reciting the Bledgill Eages.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Allow us to sound prayer in lieu of invitation.
Amen. Order, arms. Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two. Ready, two. Colors.
Now we'll partake in the swearing in of Officer Fu Kang.
All right, raise your right hand. I, Fu Kang.
I, Fu Kang.
Having been duly selected.
Having been duly selected.
To serve as an officer of the Police Department for the City of Wisconsin Rapids.
Serve as a police officer for the City of Wisconsin.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And of the State of Wisconsin.
And will faithfully discharge the duties of said office.
And will faithfully discharge the duty of said office.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
So have we had.
So have we had. Thank you. 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 Thank you.[395.27][395.27][S01. Thank you.[396.27][396.27][S01. Thank you.[397.27][397.27][S01. Thank you.[398.27][398.27][S01. Thank you.[399.27][399.27][S01. Thank you.[400.27][400.27][S01. Thank you.[401.27][401.27][S01. Thank you.[402.27][402.27][S01. Thank you.[403.27][403.27][S01. Thank you.[404.27][404.27][S01. Thank you.[405.27][405.27][S01. Thank you.[406.27][406.27][S01. Thank you.[407.27][407.27][S01. Thank you.[408.27][408.27][S01. Thank you.[409.27][409.27][S01. Thank you.[410.27][410.27][S01. Thank you.[411.27][411.27][S01. Thank you.[412.27][412.27][S01. Thank you.[413.27][413.27][S01. Thank you.[414.27][414.27][S01. Thank you.[415.27][415.27][S01. Thank you.[416.27][416.27][S01. Thank you.[417.27][417.27][S01. Thank you.[418.27][418.27][S01. Thank you.[419.27][419.27][S01. Thank you.[420.27][420.27][S01. Thank you.[421.27][421.27][S01. Thank you.[422.27][422.27][S01. Thank you.[423.27][423.27][S01. Thank you.[424.27][424.27][S01. Thank you.[425.27][425.27][S01. Thank you.[426.27][426.27][S01. Thank you.[427.27][427.27][S01. Thank you.[428.27][428.27][S01. Thank you.[429.27][429.27][S01. Thank you.[430.27][430.27][S01. Thank you.[431.27][431.27][S01. Thank you.[432.27][432.27][S01. Thank you.[433.27][433.27][S01. Thank you.[434.27][434.27][S01. Thank you.[435.27][435.27][S01. Thank you.[436.27][436.27][S01. Thank you.[437.27][437.27][S01. Thank you.[438.27][438.27][S01. Thank you.[439.27][439.27][S01. Thank you.[440.27][440.27][S01. Thank you.[441.27][441.27][S01. Thank you.[442.27][442.27][S01. Thank you.[443.27][443.27][S01. Thank you.[444.27][444.27][S01. Thank you.[445.27][445.27][S01. Thank you.[446.27][446.27][S01. Thank you.[447.27][447.27][S01. Thank you.[448.27][448.27][S01. Thank you.[449.27][449.27][S01. Thank you.[450.27][450.27][S01. Thank you.[451.27][451.27][S01. Thank you.[452.27][452.27][S01. Thank you.[453.27][453.27][S01. Thank you.[454.27][454.27][S01. Thank you.[455.27][455.27][S01. Thank you.[456.27][456.27][S01. Thank you.[457.27][457.27][S01. Thank you.[458.27][458.27][S01. Thank you.[459.27][459.27][S01. Thank you.[460.27][460.27][S01. Thank you.[461.27][461.27][S01. Thank you.[462.27][462.27][S01. Thank you.[463.27][463.27][S01. Thank you.[464.27][464.27][S01. Thank you.[465.27][465.27][S01. Thank you.[466.27][466.27][S01. Thank you.[467.27][467.27][S01. Thank you.[468.27][468.27][S01. Thank you.[469.27][469.27][S01. Thank you.[470.27][470.27][S01. Thank you.[471.27][471.27][S01. Thank you.[472.27][472.27][S01. Thank you.[473.27][473.27][S01. Thank you.[474.27][474.27][S01. Thank you.[475.27][475.27][S01. Thank you.[476.27][476.27][S01. Thank you.[477.27][477.27][S01. Thank you.[478.27][478.27][S01. Thank you.[479.27][479.27][S01. Thank you.[480.27][480.27][S01. Thank you.[481.27][481.27][S01. Thank you.[482.27][482.27][S01. Thank you.[483.27][483.27][S01. Thank you.[484.27][484.27][S01. Thank you.[485.27][485.27][S01. Thank you.[486.27][486.27][S01. Thank you.[487.27][487.27][S01. Thank you.[488.27][488.27][S01. Thank you.[489.27][489.27][S01. Thank you.[490.27][490.27][S01. Thank you.[491.27][491.27][S01. Thank you.[492.27][492.27][S01. Thank you.[493.27][493.27][S01. Thank you.[494.27][494.27][S01. Thank you.[495.27][495.27][S01. Thank you.[496.27][496.27][S01. Thank you.[497.27][497.27][S01. Thank you.[498.27][498.27][S01. Thank you.[499.27][499.27][S01. Thank you.[500.27][500.27][S01. Thank you.[501.27][501.27][S01. Thank you.[502.27][502.27][S01. Thank you.[503.27][503.27][S01. Thank you.[504.27][504.27][S01. Thank you.[505.27][505.27][S01. Thank you.[506.27][506.27][S01. Thank you.[507.27][507.27][S01. Thank you.[508.27][508.27][S01. Thank you.[509.27][509.27][S01. Thank you.[510.27][510.27][S01. Thank you.[511.27][511.27][S01. Thank you.[512.27][512.27][S01. Thank you.[513.27][513.27][S01. Thank you.[514.27][514.27][S01. Thank you.[515.27][515.27][S01. Thank you.[516.27][516.27][S01. Thank you.[517.27][517.27][S01. Thank you.[518.27][518.27][S01. Thank you.[519.27][519.27][S01. Thank you.[520.27][520.27][S01. Thank you.[521.27][521.27][S01. Thank you.[522.27][522.27][S01. Thank you.[523.27][523.27][S01. Thank you.[524.27][524.27][S01. Thank you.[525.27][525.27][S01. Thank you.[526.27][526.27][S01. Thank you.[527.27][527.27][S01. Thank you.[528.27][528.27][S01. Thank you.[529.27][529.27][S01. Thank you.[530.27][530.27][S01. Thank you.[531.27][531.27][S01. Thank you.[532.27][532.27][S01. Thank you.[533.27][533.27][S01. Thank you.[534.27][534.27][S01. Thank you.[535.27][535.27][S01. Thank you.[536.27][536.27][S01. Thank you.[537.27][537.27][S01. Thank you.[538.27][538.27][S01. Thank you.[539.27][539.27][S01. Thank you.[540.27][540.27][S01. Thank you.[541.27][541.27][S01. Thank you.[542.27][542.27][S01. Thank you.[543.27][543.27][S01. Thank you.[544.27][544.27][S01. Thank you.[545.27][545.27][S01. Thank you.[546.27][546.27][S01. Thank you.[547.27][547.27][S01. Thank you.[548.27][548.27][S01. Thank you.[549.27][549.27][S01. Thank you.[550.27][550.27][S01. Thank you.[551.27][551.27][S01. Thank you.[552.27][552.27][S01. Thank you.[553.27][553.27][S01. Thank you.[554.27][554.27][S01. Thank you.[555.27][555.27][S01. Thank you.[556.27][556.27][S01. Thank you.[557.27][557.27][S01. Thank you.[558.27][558.27][S01. Thank you.[559.27][559.27][S01. Thank you.[560.27][560.27][S01. Thank you.[561.27][561.27][S01. Thank you.[562.27][562.27][S01. Thank you.[563.27][563.27][S01. Thank you.[564.27][564.27][S01. Thank you.[565.27][565.27][S01. Thank you.[566.27][566.27][S01. Thank you.[567.27][567.27][S01. Thank you.[568.27][568.27][S01. Thank you.[569.27][569.27][S01. Thank you.[570.27][570.27][S01. Thank you.[571.27][571.27][S01. Thank you.[572.27][572.27][S01. Thank you.[573.27][573.27][S01. Thank you.[574.27][574.27][S01. Thank you.[575.27][575.27][S01. Thank you.[576.27][576.27][S01. Thank you.[577.27][577.27][S01. Thank you.[578.27][578.27][S01. Thank you.[579.27][579.27][S01. Thank you.[580.27][580.27][S01. Thank you.[581.27][581.27][S01. Thank you.[582.27][582.27][S01. Thank you.[583.27][583.27][S01. Thank you.[584.27][584.27][S01. Thank you.[585.27][585.27][S01. Thank you.[586.27][586.27][S01. Thank you.[587.27][587.27][S01. Thank you.[588.27][588.27][S01. Thank you.[589.27][589.27][S01. Thank you.[590.27][590.27][S01. Thank you.[591.27][591.27][S01. Thank you.[592.27][592.27][S01. Thank you.[593.27][593.27][S01. Thank you.[594.27][594.27][S01. Thank you.[595.27][595.27][S01. Thank you.[596.27][596.27][S01. Thank you.[597.27][597.27][S01. Thank you.[598.27][598.27][S01. Thank you.[599.27][599.27][S01. Thank you.[600.27][600.27][S01. Thank you.[601.27][601.27][S01. Thank you.[602.27][602.27][S01. Thank you.[603.27][603.27][S01. Thank you.[604.27][604.27][S01. Thank you.[605.27][605.27][S01. Thank you.[606.27][606.27][S01. Thank you.[607.27][607.27][S01. Thank you.[608.27][608.27][S01. Thank you.[609.27][609.27][S01. Thank you.[610.27][610.27][S01. Thank you.[611.27][611.27][S01. Thank you.[612.27][612.27][S01. Thank you.[613.27][613.27][S01. Thank you.[614.27][614.27][S01. Thank you.[615.27][615.27][S01. Thank you.[616.27][616.27][S01. Thank you.[617.27][617.27][S01. Thank you.[618.27][618.27][S01. Thank you.[619.27][619.27][S01. Thank you.[620.27][620.27][S01. Thank you.[621.27][621.27][S01. Thank you.[622.27][622.27][S01. Thank you.[623.27][623.27][S01. Thank you.[624.27][624.27][S01. Thank you.[625.27][625.27][S01. Thank you.[626.27][626.27][S01. Thank you.[627.27][627.27][S01. Thank you.[628.27][628.27][S01. Thank you.[629.27][629.27][S01. Thank you.[630.27][630.27][S01. Thank you.[631.27][631.27][S01. Thank you.[632.27][632.27][S01. Thank you.[633.27][633.27][S01. Thank you.[634.27][634.27][S01. Thank you.[635.27][635.27][S01. Thank you.[636.27][636.27][S01. Thank you.[637.27][637.27][S01. Thank you.[638.27][638.27][S01. Thank you.[639.27][639.27][S01. Thank you.[640.27][640.27][S01. Thank you.[641.27][641.27][S01. Thank you.[642.27][642.27][S01. Thank you.[643.27][643.27][S01. Thank you.[644.27][644.27][S01. Thank you.[645.27][645.27][S01. Thank you.[646.27][646.27][S01. Thank you.[647.27][647.27][S01. Thank you.[648.27][648.27][S01. Thank you.[649.27][649.27][S01. Thank you.[650.27][650.27][S01. Thank you.[651.27][651.27][S01. Thank you.[652.27][652.27][S01. Thank you.[653.27][653.27][S01. Thank you.[654.27][654.27][S01. Thank you.[655.27][655.27][S01. Thank you.[656.27][656.27][S01. Thank you.[657.27][657.27][S01. Thank you.[658.27][658.27][S01. Thank you.[659.27][659.27][S01. Thank you.[660.27][660.27][S01. Thank you.[661.27][661.27][S01. Thank you.[662.27][662.27][S01. Thank you.[663.27][663.27][S01. Thank you.[664.27][664.27][S01. Thank you.[665.27][665.27][S01. Thank you.[666.27][666.27][S01. Thank you.[667.27][667.27][S01. Thank you.[668.27][668.27][S01. Thank you.[669.27][669.27][S01. Thank you.[670.27][670.27][S01. Thank you.[671.27][671.27][S01. Thank you.[672.27][672.27][S01. Thank you.[673.27][673.27][S01. Thank you.[674.27][674.27][S01. Thank you.[675.27][675.27][S01. Thank you.[676.27][676.27][S01. Thank you.[677.27][677.27][S01. Thank you.[678.27][678.27][S01. Thank you.[679.27][679.27][S01. Thank you.[680.27][680.27][S01. Thank you.[681.27][681.27][S01. Thank you.[682.27][682.27][S01. Thank you.[683.27][683.27][S01. Thank you.[684.27][684.27][S01. Thank you.[685.27][685.27][S01. Thank you.[686.27][686.27][S01. Thank you.[687.27][687.27][S01. Thank you.[688.27][688.27][S01. Thank you.[689.27][689.27][S01. Thank you.[690.27][690.27][S01. Thank you.[691.27][691.27][S01. Thank you.[692.27][692.27][S01. Thank you.[693.27][693.27][S01. Thank you.[694.27][694.27][S01. Thank you.[695.27][695.27][S01. Thank you.[696.27][696.27][S01. Thank you.[697.27][697.27][S01. Thank you.[698.27][698.27][S01. Thank you.[699.27][699.27][S01. Thank you.[700.27][700.27][S01. Thank you.[701.27][701.27][S01. Thank you.[702.27][702.27][S01. Thank you.[703.27][703.27][S01. Thank you.[704.27][704.27][S01. Thank you.[705.27][705.27][S01. Thank you.[706.27][706.27][S01. Thank you.[707.27][707.27][S01. Thank you.[708.27][708.27][S01. Thank you.[709.27][709.27][S01. Thank you.[710.27][710.27][S01. Thank you.[711.27][711.27][S01. Thank you.[712.27][712.27][S01. Thank you.[713.27][713.27][S01. Thank you.[714.27][714.27][S01. Thank you.[715.27][715.27][S01. Thank you.[716.27][716.27][S01. Thank you.[717.27][717.27][S01. Thank you.[718.27][718.27][S01. Thank you.[719.27][719.27][S01. Thank you.[720.27][720.27][S01. Thank you.[721.27][721.27][S01. Thank you.[722.27][722.27][S01. Thank you.[723.27][723.27][S01. Thank you.[724.27][724.27][S01. Thank you.[725.27][725.27][S01. Thank you.[726.27][726.27][S01. Thank you.[727.27][727.27][S01. Thank you.[728.27][728.27][S01. Thank you.[729.27][729.27][S01. Thank you.[730.27][730.27][S01. Thank you.[731.27][731.27][S01. Thank you.[732.27][732.27][S01. Thank you.[733.27][733.27][S01. Thank you.[734.27][734.27][S01. Thank you.[735.27][735.27][S01. Thank you.[736.27][736.27][S01. Thank you.[737.27][737.27][S01. Thank you.[738.27][738.27][S01. Thank you.[739.27][739.27][S01. Thank you.[740.27][740.27][S01. Thank you.[741.27][741.27][S01. Thank you.[742.27][742.27][S01. Thank you.[743.27][743.27][S01. Thank you.[744.27][744.27][S01. Thank you.[745.27][745.27][S01. Thank you.[746.27][746.27][S01. Thank you.[747.27][747.27][S01. Thank you.[748.27][748.27][S01. Thank you.[749.27][749.27][S01. Thank you.[750.27][750.27][S01. Thank you.[751.27][751.27][S01. Thank you.[752.27][752.27][S01. Thank you.[753.27][753.27][S01. Thank you.[754.27][754.27][S01. Thank you.[755.27][755.27][S01. Thank you.[756.27][756.27][S01. Thank you.[757.27][757.27][S01. Thank you.[758.27][758.27][S01. Thank you.[759.27][759.27][S01. Thank you.[760.27][760.27][S01. Thank you.[761.27][761.27][S01. Thank you.[762.27][762.27][S01. Thank you.[763.27][763.27][S01. Thank you.[764.27][764.27][S01. Thank you.[765.27][765.27][S01. Thank you.[766.27][766.27][S01. Thank you.[767.27][767.27][S01. Thank you.[768.27][768.27][S01. Thank you.[769.27][769.27][S01. Thank you.[770.27][770.27][S01. Thank you.[771.27][771.27][S01. Thank you.[772.27][772.27][S01. Thank you.[773.27][773.27][S01. Thank you.[774.27][774.27][S01. Thank you.[775.27][775.27][S01. Thank you.[776.27][776.27][S01. Thank you.[777.27][777.27][S01. Thank you.[778.27][778.27][S01. Thank you.[779.27][779.27][S01. Thank you.[780.27][780.27][S01. Thank you.[781.27][781.27][S01. Thank you.[782.27][782.27][S01. Thank you.[783.27][783.27][S01. Thank you.[784.27][784.27][S01. Thank you.[785.27][785.27][S01. Thank you.[786.27][786.27][S01. Thank you.[787.27][787.27][S01. Thank you.[788.27][788.27][S01. Thank you.[789.27][789.27][S01. Thank you.[790.27][790.27][S01. Thank you.[791.27][791.27][S01. Thank you.[792.27][792.27][S01. Thank you.[793.27][793.27][S01. Thank you.[794.27][794.27][S01. Thank you.[795.27][795.27][S01. Thank you.[796.27][796.27][S01. Thank you.[797.27][797.27][S01. Thank you.[798.27][798.27][S01. Thank you.[799.27][799.27][S01. Thank you.[800.27][800.27][S01. Thank you.[801.27][801.27][S01. Thank you.[802.27][802.27][S01. Thank you.[803.27][803.27][S01. Thank you.[804.27][804.27][S01. Thank you.[805.27][805.27][S01. Thank you.[806.27][806.27][S01. Thank you.[807.27][807.27][S01. Thank you.[808.27][808.27][S01. Thank you.[809.27][809.27][S01. Thank you.[810.27][810.27][S01. Thank you.[811.27][811.27][S01. Thank you.[812.27][812.27][S01. Thank you.[813.27][813.27][S01. Thank you.[814.27][814.27][S01. Thank you.[815.27][815.27][S01. Thank you.[816.27][816.27][S01. Thank you.[817.27][817.27][S01. Thank you.[818.27][818.27][S01. Thank you.[819.27][819.27][S01. Thank you.[820.27][820.27][S01. Thank you.[821.27][821.27][S01. Thank you.[822.27][822.27][S01. Thank you.[823.27][823.27][S01. Thank you.[824.27][824.27][S01. Thank you.[825.27][825.27][S01. Thank you.[826.27][826.27][S01. Thank you.[827.27][827.27][S01. Thank you.[828.27][828.27][S01. Thank you.[829.27][829.27][S01. Thank you.[830.27][830.27][S01. Thank you.[831.27][831.27][S01. Thank you.[832.27][832.27][S01. Thank you.[833.27][833.27][S01. Thank you.[834.27][834.27][S01. Thank you.[835.27][835.27][S01. Thank you.[836.27][836.27][S01. Thank you.[837.27][837.27][S01. Thank you.[838.27][838.27][S01. Thank you.[839.27][839.27][S01. Thank you.[840.27][840.27][S01. Thank you.[841.27][841.27][S01. Thank you.[842.27][842.27][S01. Thank you.[843.27][843.27][S01. Thank you.[844.27][844.27][S01. Thank you.[845.27][845.27][S01. Thank you.[846.27][846.27][S01. Thank you.[847.27][847.27][S01. Thank you.[848.27][848.27][S01. Thank you.[849.27][849.27][S01. Thank you.[850.27][850.27][S01. Thank you.[851.27][851.27][S01. Thank you.[852.27][852.27][S01. Thank you.[853.27][853.27][S01. Thank you.[854.27][854.27][S01. Thank you.[855.27][855.27][S01. Thank you.[856.27][856.27][S01. Thank you.[857.27][857.27][S01. Thank you.[858.27][858.27][S01. Thank you.[859.27][859.27][S01. Thank you.[860.27][860.27][S01. Thank you.[861.27][861.27][S01. Thank you.[862.27][862.27][S01. Thank you.[863.27][863.27][S01. Thank you.[864.27][864.27][S01. Thank you.[865.27][865.27][S01. Thank you.[866.27][866.27][S01. Thank you.[867.27][867.27][S01. Thank you.[868.27][868.27][S01. Thank you.[869.27][869.27][S01. Thank you.[870.27][870.27][S01. Thank you.[871.27][871.27][S01. Thank you.[872.27][872.27][S01. Thank you.[873.27][873.27][S01. Thank you.[874.27][874.27][S01. Thank you.[875.27][875.27][S01. Thank you.[876.27][876.27][S01. Thank you.[877.27][877.27][S01. Thank you.[878.27][878.27][S01. Thank you.[879.27][879.27][S01. Thank you.[880.27][880.27][S01. Thank you.[881.27][881.27][S01. Thank you.[882.27][882.27][S01. Thank you.[883.27][883.27][S01. Thank you.[884.27][884.27][S01. Thank you.[885.27][885.27][S01. Thank you.[886.27][886.27][S01. Thank you.[887.27][887.27][S01. Thank you.[888.27][888.27][S01. Thank you. Sure. So in your packet is a memorandum that was sent to the wastewater commission that reviews the issue and describes the solution. There was an error in the original income in that it, the numbers that were obtained for sanitary sewer also included financing from the storm sewer utility as well. And so when we were working on the budget, the finance director pointed out that something wasn't adding up. We remodeled the rate structure citywide and discovered the issue. Staff sat down and met with our consultant and devised a plan that meets the original intent, and that was to create a rate structure that is sustainable for the utility and does not increase the rates more than $3 per month for the average wastewater customer. It does leave the utility a little short as compared to what was originally anticipated, but between staff and the wastewater commission, we believe that had we had the correct numbers coming out of the gate, this is what we would have recommended anyway. So with that, the volume charge would be changed to $3.54 per 100 cubic feet. That is less than the old rate, but the utility will not be giving the first 100 cubic feet away for free, and that was approved at two months ago. In your packet, you can ignore the page with the asterisks that says "old table" and take a look at the page that says "ordinance number MC 1217." The page following that includes the Table 1, which is the schedule of rates. In that schedule of rates, everything is the same as what was originally proposed. The monthly minimum, the minimum monthly charges remains the same. The volume charge for domestic wastewater is changed to $3.54 per 100 cubic feet, and the non-domestic industrial wastewater surcharges under the category of volume also is $3.54 per 100 cubic feet. Those are the only things that will, are being proposed to be changed, and that would represent a responsible wastewater budget. Moving forward, we would analyze after six months, because this is a, you know, our process and how we do this has changed a bit. In six months, we would, as a commission, re-review the rate structure and the income to make sure that the actual income equates what the model shows, and then take a look at the next two years out and try to project what rates would be then two years out so that everyone has plenty of forewarning. Thank you. Alder Person Stack, you're first.
Mr. Terry, Mr. Irvin.
Okay. Great. Thank you. Are there any other requests to speak? With that, I'd entertain a motion on the item.
Motion to accept.
The motion by Coth to approve, is there a second? Second by Furkey. Now another opportunity for discussion. Any requests to speak? See no requests to speak. The motion is to approve the ordinance revising the schedule of sewer charges contained in Chapter 8 of the municipal code. Please cast your ballots.
Seven i's, zero n's, motion carried.
Item nine is a report of the Planning Commission meeting held November 7. The Planning Commission met at 4:00 PM on November 7 in the first floor conference room of City Hall. Members present included myself, Shane Burkhardt, Joe Terry, Fran Aaron, Lee Tao, and Alder Person Todd Furkey. Members absent was Tim Burkhauser, others in attendance is on file in the clerk's office. Item one is approval of the reports from the October 3 and October 17 Planning Commission meetings. There's a motion by Furkey and second by Aaron to approve the reports, and that motion carried. Item two, maps and plots received. There are no maps or plots received. Item three is a public hearing on Plan 160900 Edward Lawrence LLC. The applicant is requesting a rezoning from B4 Central Area Mixed-Use District to B2 General Commercial District. Subject property is located at 711 Dale Street. Public hearing was called to order. Public hearing was called to order. Mike Zerflu spoke in favor of the request so that the neighborhood has consistent zoning and for allowable signage. John Steiner spoke in opposition regarding questions about the zoning process and concerns regarding general site aesthetic and sign sizes if the request is approved, and would like limitations on sign sizing and safety if the request is approved. Public hearing was closed at 4:07 PM. Item 4 was action on Plan 160900 Edward Lawrence LLC, rezoning from B4 Central Area Mixed-Use District to B2 General Commercial District. A question was asked by myself, asking why the request is being made, and Mike Zerflu explained the reason is primarily because the sign sizes allow for the proposed zoning fits his business needs. A question was asked by Joe Terry regarding the zoning consistency within the immediate corridor. All properties along the expressway are currently zoned B2 in the immediate corridor adjacent to the 8th Street or expressway. There was a motion by Furkey, seconded by Aaron, to approve Plan 160900 Edward Lawrence LLC to rezone parcel number 34082-- 08022 from B4 Central Area Mixed-Use District to B2 General Commercial District, and that motion carried unanimously. Item 5 was adjournment. There was a motion by Tao, seconded by Burkhart, to adjourn at 4:20 PM, and that motion carried unanimously. With that, I present the Planning Commission meeting from November 7 for your consideration.
Motion to accept.
A motion by Coth to approve. Is there a second? Second by Furkey to accept the reports. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, please cast your ballots. Legal objections? No. No legal objections. Was there any legal objections on that? Okay, okay.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion carried.
Thank you. Item 10, Standing Council Committee reports. Item A is a finance and property meeting held November 1, as well as the meetings on 9th and the 15th. Alderperson Dolan, the floor is yours.
I'll have it for a while. Thank you, Your Honor, fellow Alderperson city staff, those present and those watching at home. Finance and Property Committee met at 5:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1, 2016, in the first floor conference room of City Hall. All members were present. Also present were Alderperson Furkey, Alderperson Kellogg, Mayor Verwink, Tim DeSorcey, Cindy Schlichting, Paul Shabelski, Joe Terry, and Joe Bachman from the Wisconsin Rapid City Times. Item 1, the meeting was called to order by Alderperson Dolan at 5:01 PM. Agenda item 2, review quotes and consider approval to purchase two half-ton pickup trucks, two 1-ton 4x4 cabin chassis with dump box and snowplows, one 450 4x4 cabin chassis with utility body, and one 9-foot composite utility body with welder and air compressor. It was moved by Zerflu and seconded by Dolan to approve the purchase of one half-ton extended cab and one 3/4-ton crew cab for the amount of $60,365 from Wheelers of Wisconsin Rapids. That motion carried. It was moved by Dolan and seconded by Zerflu to approve the purchase of two 1-ton pickups and one barricade truck from Scafidi Stevens Point for the amount of $146,147. That motion carried. It was moved by Zerflu and seconded by HEP to approve the purchase from Stainless and Repair for the amount of $9,370. That motion carried. Item 3, review and consider for approval the Wisconsin DOT Public Transit Agency Safety Plan for the city's mass transit program. It was moved by HEP and seconded by Zerflu to approve the Wisconsin DOT Public Transit Agency Safety Plan for the city's mass transit program. That motion carried. Item 4, review and consider for approval Wisconsin DOT Title VI Plan for the city's mass transit program. It was moved by Zerflu and seconded by Dolan to approve a Wisconsin DOT Title VI Plan for the city's mass transit program. I'm sorry, it's 9. That motion carried. Review and consider-- item 5, review and consider for approval a tax collection policy. It was moved by Dolan and seconded by Zerflu to approve a tax collection policy. That motion carried. Item 6, review and consider for approval a debt management policy. It was moved by Zerflu and seconded by HEP to approve a debt management policy. That motion carried. Item 7, approve the successor agent application of Thomas Youngworth for the Class B Beer and Class B Liquor licenses for Andy's Bar and Grill LLC, 410 East Grand Avenue. It was moved by HEP and seconded by Dolan to approve the successor agent application of Thomas Youngworth for the Class P Beer and Class B Liquor License for Andy's Bar and Grill LLC, 410 East Grand Avenue. That motion carried. Item 8, request for approval of a Class A Beer and Class A Liquor License filed by Amber Prime LLC Doing Business U-Pump for the premises located at 3553 A Street South. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Zerflu to approve the Class A Beer and Class A Liquor License filed by Amber Prime LLC Doing Business at U-Pump for the premises located at 3553 A Street South. That motion carried. Item 9, review of the 2017 budget. It was just a review. The Finance-- Property Committee will meet to review the budget again on Wednesday, November 9 at 5:00 PM. Item 10, beverage operator license applications. It was moved by Dolan, seconded by Zerflu to approve the beverage operator license as presented. That motion carried. Item 11, it was moved by Dolan, seconded by Zerflu to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 6:05 PM. Finance and Property Committee met at 6:00 PM on Wednesday, November 9, 2016, in the floor-- first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Furkey, Alderperson Coth, Alderperson Stack, Alderperson Kellogg, Mayor Verwink, Joe Terry, and Tim DeSorcey. Item 1, the meeting was called to order at 6:00 PM. Item 2, review and consider a resolution amending the 2016 budget. Motion by Zerflu, seconded by HEP, to approve Resolution Number 21 amending the 2016 budget. See attachment number 1. That motion carried. Item 3, update on aquatics design proposals. Joe Terry and Mayor Verwink gave the committee an update on the aquatics design proposals in process. No action was taken. Item 4, review and consider a grant management policy. The committee reviewed the grant management policy, and the item was held over until the next Finance and Property Committee. See attachment 2. Item 5, final review of the 2017 budget. No action was taken. Item 6, an audit of the bills. Motion by Zerflu, seconded by HEP, to approve check numbers 65202 to 65513 and manual check numbers 99151 to 99167. That motion carried. Item 7, there was a motion by Dolan, seconded by HEP, to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 6:34 PM. Finance and Property Committee met again this evening at 5:00 PM in the first floor conference room at City Hall. All members were present. Also attending were Alderperson Furkey, Alderperson Coth, Alderperson Stack, Alderperson Kellogg, Mayor Verwink, Joe Terry, Jeff Kuhn, Todd Wyler, and Tim DeSorcey. Item 1, the meeting was called to order at 5:01 PM. Item 2, review and consider the 2017 Water Works and Lighting Commission Budget. Motion by Dolan, seconded by Zerflu to approve the 2017 Water Works and Lighting Commission Budget. Attachment number 1, that motion carried. Item 3, review and consider a grant management policy. Motion by Zerflu, seconded by HEP, to approve the grant management policy. See attachment 2. That motion carried. Item 4, a resolution adopting the tax levy in the 2017 city budget. Moved by Dolan, seconded by Zerflu to approve the resolution adapting-- adopting the tax levy in the 2017 city budget. See attachment 3. That motion carry. Item 5 was motion by Dolan, seconded by HEP, to adjourn. The meeting adjourned at 5:12 PM. With that, I'd look-- motion for approval of these three reports.
A motion to approve by Dolan. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. Move into discussion. Are there any requests to speak on the three reports or-- yeah, three reports from the Finance Committee? Seeing no requests to speak. The motion is to approve. Please cast your ballots.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion carried.
Item 10 this evening is 10D, is Public Works Committee meeting held November 1. Alderperson Coth, I believe you're going to, unless, Scott, you were prepared to-- okay. Read the report for the Public Works Committee meeting.
The Public Works Committee met at 6:00 PM on Tuesday, November 1, 2016, in the first floor conference room of City Hall, 444 West Grand Avenue. Alderpersons Kellogg and Coth were present. Alderperson Rayom was excused. Also present were Alderperson Furkey, Director of Public Works, Joe Cherry, City Engineer Neil Joe Ikestead, and City Clerk Paul Shabelski, sorry. Item 1 was to review the DPW report. The Department of Public Works report was reviewed. Item number 2, consider removing parking restrictions on the following streets. Lee Street from 6th Street South to 8th Street South, Dewey Street from 6th Street South toward 8th Street South, and Dewey Street at the corner of 5th Street South. No action was taken by the committee-- by the Public Works Committee on this item. Item number 3, consider extending DOT Project 69990789 East Grand Avenue from 3rd Street South to 8th Street South, also to include the section from Grand Avenue Bridge to 3rd Street South. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Coth to approve extending DOT Project 69990789 East Grand Avenue from 3rd Street South to 8th Street South to also include the section from the Grand Avenue Bridge to 3rd Street South. The speed limit ordinance review for 32nd Avenue to be consistent with previous committee and council action. It was moved by Coth and seconded by Kellogg to approve the speed limit of 35 miles an hour on 32nd Avenue to be consistent with previous committee and council action. Motion carried. I'd like to point out in number 4 that that should probably be 32nd Street because we had to work with Grand Rapids to do that. Item 5, review and consider installing streetlights on Carey Street, Washington Street, and 32nd Street. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Coth to improve installing streetlights on Carey Street, Washington Street, and 32nd Street. Motion carried. Review request by Vesper Snowmobile Club to modify existing route due to inability to cross private property to allow snowmobile access on Industrial Street and a portion of 25th Avenue North to QuickTrip. It was moved by Kellogg and seconded by Coth to request-- to approve the request by the Vesper Snowmobile Club to modify the existing route due to an inability to cross private property to allow snowmobile access on Industrial Street and a portion of 25th Avenue North to access QuickTrip. Motion carried. Item 7, truck route signage update. It was moved by Coth and seconded by Kellogg to proceed with the truck route signage update in accordance with the DOT recommendations. Item 8 was to review the public works referral list. Item 9 was to adjourn. It was moved by Coth and seconded by Kellogg to adjourn. The meeting was adjourned at 6:10.
All right, we've got the Public Works Committee meeting. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that meeting?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Dolan. Is there a second?
A second.
Move into the second here. Who did I get for a second? And then we'll move into discussion. Todd, Alderperson Furkey for the second. Now we'll move into discussion. Alderperson Kellogg.
The adjournment must have been 7:10, not 6:10. No, we started at 6.
I think it was 7-- 7:10. I was going to speak on that, too, there.
All right. No meetings start early. They start when they're supposed to. Can't start early. All right, we've got a motion. In a second, any further discussion on the report? Seeing none, please cast your ballots.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion carried.
Item 10E, the Human Resources Committee meeting held November 1. Alderperson Furkey, floor is yours.
Thank you, Your Honor. The Human Resources Committee met November 1 in the third floor conference room at 4:00 PM. All members were present. Also present were Beth Bookenowitz, Julie Berger, Tim DeSorcey, Joel Flue Allen, Randy Johns, Brian Kriskowski, Jeremy Sickler, Joe Terry, Mayor Verwink, and Joe Bachman from the Wisconsin Rapid City Times. The meeting was called to order at 4:00 PM by Chairman Todd Furkey. Item number 2 was to consider and approve the creation of a part-time budgeted position at the airport. A motion was made by Alderperson Stack and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to approve the creation of a part-time, and that would be 20 hours per week, a budgeted position at the airport. The wage rate will be $14.25 per hour, and that motion carried. Item number 3 was consider a 2017 general wage increase for non-union employees. A motion was made by Alderperson Stack, seconded by Alderperson Furkey, to approve a 2017 1% base wage increase and a 1% lump sum bonus for non-union employees. That motion carried. Item number 4, 4A, in open session, the committee will vote to go into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin State Statute 19.85 Para I, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, investing of public funds, or the conducting of other specified public businesses whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. A motion was made by Alderperson Furkey and seconded by Alderperson Stack to go into closed session as noted above. A roll call vote was taken along-- a roll call vote was taken with all voting in the affirmative, so that motion carried. Item B, in closed session, as noted above, the committee discussed bargaining and base wage proposals for the asset and ASB union groups. Item C, the committee may return to open session to make any necessary recommendations. The committee did not return to open session, and item number 5 was adjournment. A motion was made by Alderperson Furkey and seconded by Alderperson Kellogg to adjourn. That motion carried. Meeting adjourned in closed session at 4:45 PM, respectively submitted by Alderperson Furkey.
All right, we've got the Human Resources Committee meeting report. Council members, what are your wishes regarding that?
I'll make a motion to approve.
A motion by Furkey to approve. Is there a second? And we've got a second by Stack. Thank you. Any discussion on the reports? Are there any requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion carried.
Item 11 on our agenda, miscellaneous reports. Item 1 is the Southwood County Airport Commission held the 6th of October, 18th of October, and 3rd of November. Item 2 is the Housing Authority meeting held September 28. Item 3, the McMillan Memorial Library Board of Trustees meeting held November 19. Item 4, the Park and Rec Commission held November 2. Item 5, the Fire Department monthly report for October. Item 6, the Police Department monthly report for October. Item 7, the Wastewater Treatment Commission held November 2. Item 8, the Mayor's Youth Council held November-- October 17. Council members, what are your wishes regarding those reports?
Make a motion to accept the balance of the reports.
A motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Kellogg. Move into discussion. I guess, are there any requests to speak while his computer-- there we go. Coth is gone again. There we go. He's back. Are there any requests to speak? I would just indicate there has been a number of items, you know, we could talk about related to the airport. Encourage you to connect with Jeremy, the airport manager, if you have any questions, or myself. Joe Terry obviously is familiar with a number of the airport happenings. There's obviously a major capital need to make some investments out there to be ready for spring play at San Valley and probably in the March-April timeframe, but as well as some other projects related to the reconstruction of the Crosswind Runway, which will involve the topping and removal of trees on off-airport property. So that's another project to watch. If you-- I know not everybody has-- represents districts surrounding the airport, but I want to mention those items from the airport. Park and Rec Commission did have some discussion related to the zoo. It's a important asset in our community. I think there was 15,000 visits to the zoo last year, the summer, so a tremendous asset. I advocated for some discussion regarding a master plan for the zoo in areas maybe we can attract some capital investment to improve the zoo. Would mention that as well from the report. So those are the only two I'd mention. Are there any other requests to speak? Seeing no requests to speak, please cast your ballots. The motion is to approve.
Seven ayes, zero nays, motion carried.
Move into item number 12, is a referral of communications to committees. Are there any referrals? Nothing is listed. Are there any referrals? Sure.
I just like with all the meetings going on, I know last council session, we had quite a thing on agendas. I'd just like to thank everybody and the city staff for getting the agendas out on time. We had them in plenty of time, Clerk, so nice job. Keep that up. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other comments or referral of communications to committees? Seeing none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion by Coth. Is there a second? Second by Zerflu. All in favor? Any opposed? We stand adjourned. Thank you all for being here and those joining us via remote.